Trustees order. Call this regular meeting, the Haley Township Board of Trustees order on Tuesday, December 19 at 6:34 PM. Call the roll, please.
Swedek?
Here.
And Sherrell?
Here.
Augustine?
Here.
I'd ask everyone to join in honoring the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will move to approve the minutes for the December 5, 2023, regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Asherall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I'm going to abstain.
I will move to approve the minutes for the December 5, 2023, special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Asherall. Discussion?
Is that the one in the morning, or was the regular meeting in the morning?
That was the special meeting was the morning.
It was in the morning, yes.
Yeah, they'll be the kid, the kids.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Got them under control.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to approve the minutes for the December 11, special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Asherall. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move to approve the minutes for the December 13, 2023, special trustee meeting.
There's just some minor spelling errors in that. Second.
Second by Augustine.
Was it 2023 or?
It was 2022. I caught it this morning. It wasn't approved.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, 2022.
Second, and it's amended.
And the other change in there, Martha, was?
I did, I.
You did that? Okay.
Yeah, your typo is on there.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will, let's see, we have a special guest this evening, Doug Kraus, regarding donation of land to Ridge Cemetery by Hinckley residence. If you can come up and use the mic here for us.
Thank you for being here, Doug.
Thank you for having me. I'll keep it brief tonight, so if you want out here. The project I brought here tonight is the brainchild of Tom Wilson and been spearheaded by him. Tom was never afraid to ask a question. In this case, he asked, would you give some land to donate to Ridge Road, you know, to expand the cemetery? Bruce and Victoria Snyder have been longtime Hinckley residents, over 30 acres. Bruce may have known him from zoning. He sadly passed away. And his widow, Victoria, is considering donating to the township a strip of land, the entire width of Ridge Cemetery and approximately 150 feet deep, which would be about an acre of land, which would cover future expansion, you know, of the cemetery. We don't need it today, but, you know, at some point, township's growing and, you know, if nothing else, it would help with getting more parking in there for people during the, during the cemeteries or during the funeral services. Victoria has stated that she will go ahead and cover the cost of the lot split plat and the consolidations, low over $6,000, and the appraisal of the, of the property for tax purposes. But before we do that, we wanted to come before the trustees and make sure we had the support of the trustees. Does the township want this parcel of land? If we go through the headache and spend the money, you know, we want to make sure that, at the end of the day, that there is an actual donation that is completed so that she can receive the tax benefit from it. So we came here tonight just asking for a resolution or a motion to, to accept the donation of that land, you know, subject to, obviously, us going out and getting a, you know, a lot split plat consolidation and the appraisal. And all that we ask from, in, from Hinckley Township is two things. Number one, that you, they help us if we need it. We run into headaches, you know, go out and get a septic test, something like that, for some land that's never going to be developed presidentially, that, you know, we get your support with, you know, getting through the, the approval process easy. And then the second thing would just be the execution of acknowledgement of the donation of the land, the appraisal fees, the, the surveyor fees for federal income tax purposes. We're not asking you to represent a warrant that there's favorable tax treatment here or that the appraisals are correct or anything. There's just a simple donee form, 8283, from the IRS, which says, hey, we've received something that's worth more than $5,000, so we acknowledge that we got it, you know, just as with any, you know, sizable donation. You know, and we would get the land conveyed, subject to the perpetual restriction that will be used for cemetery purposes. And that, in connection with the lot split, there'd be an agreement reached as to the width of a buffer over the length of it, so, you know, Victoria still resides, you know, on the property to the north of the cemetery, you know, just a strip of land that would stay wooded. Or any alternative, like a six-foot high privacy fence to be put in when the, when the cemetery gets expanded. It doesn't need to be done today because it's all, you know, it's all wooded, but as you get closer to the northern boundary, we just want to make sure that, you know, her privacy is, is protected. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Thank you for being here. I appreciate all your work on this. I know you've been working with Tom Wilson and Suzanne Peterlin, who both have worked very diligently on this as well, so, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
I really appreciate you being here.
It's a pleasure to bring it in here tonight so much, so.
So I have a resolution I'd like to approach you with if you are in agreement to pursue the donation.
I actually just had this conversation with Mike yesterday when I met with him, and it's been a long time since I've been back there and, and walked that property because I grew up right down the street, so we used to walk there all the time. And if I am remembering correctly, it goes downward. There's a downward hill. Is that correct?
Current driveway.
Could I have you come back up to the microphone also, so it catches you?
Yes.
Or if you want to come up here, you can use this one to talk to her.
The trustees is, I'll step over to the microphone if needed.
Thank you. And we, we have this in our possession. I gave it to the trustees on November 21st. Thank you.
This was, I believe it was prepared by Tom Wilson. So the piece, the cemetery's right here in that corner, so the driveway to the cemetery on the east side, excuse me, the west side is pretty much where the property line would be.
Okay.
And it would come back. Now, here, there were two different parcels shown because Tom was asking whether to do one or two, and, and the agreement was reached just with the, the first parcel to the north. So it's sort of that top of the hill coming across where the road turns to me.
So that's, is that the same elevation as the cemetery in that area?
Yes. Yeah, the drop off is just to the west of the road.
West of the driveway, the cemetery road.
Because the bottom of the gully, if you follow that driveway out to there, is where, is the bottom of the dip.
Sure.
On Ridge.
Sure. Yeah, no, and I just thought that it had dropped in elevation back here, like into that one acre. I thought it went down. I have.
A little bit of a drop back there, but not as steep as it is heading to the west.
Okay, because I am wondering how usable that will be for the township in terms of expanding the cemetery and doing additional plots.
Well, we can bring in the, you know, the GIS from the county and show us the topo on it. You know, if you'd like us to do that, we'll bring that in.
Because it doesn't necessarily just have to be used for plots. We can use it for driveway access, parking. There are a lot of variables that it can be utilized for. Anything we can do to preserve property in Hinckley Township is always a bonus.
Yeah, the, the one big concern was actually the access. And, and in terms of, you know, when there's a funeral there, can more people in? Make it easier to get them out again as well.
The other aspect of it, it, it's a beautiful gesture, and that's not why I'm hesitating, is that I would have to, it would be my opinion to get, get this information that you're asking for in here and make sure, run it past the county prosecutor to make sure that we're doing things that we can do, you know, relative to the request that's associated with the donation.
I can give that back to you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so this board does not want to move forward with the donation from Victoria. Is that what I'm hearing at this time?
I think that's a valid, I think it's a valid point to have the prosecutor take a look at it, just to.
Well, what's the resolution?
If it's to agree with these terms, then I, I would say, no, not at this time, not until we have it reviewed.
Okay, because it would be pending all of the terms listed in front of you.
Yeah, I think it, it would be hopeless to make sure that we're able to do what you're asking for. Understandable?
Oh, sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for coming.
I'm grateful to Victoria and her late husband Bruce for all of their willingness to continue to serve Hinckley in its capacity.
Do you have some additional information? Will the trustees reach out to Forrest Thompson or?
We will.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to spearhead that?
I have no problem sending it to the prosecutor's office.
Okay.
Do you have anything in addition to this email that you provided?
Just have that email.
Okay.
The drawings. Make sure, and we'll get you the, bring up the county GIS and you can see the topo of the property as well.
Thank you.
I didn't see anything in here relative to the text in the form that you mentioned.
Oh, yeah, it's in there.
Is it in there? Okay. 8283.
Yep, 8283.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
That is timing. I literally just talked to Mike about that yesterday. I wanted to walk that, so, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do either of you gentlemen have anything pressing this evening? Okay, Martha?
Thank you. First thing I request is a resolution to accept the 2024 temporary appropriations. They were forwarded to you last week.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Asherall?
Swedek?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Second, resolution is accepting amendment number three, which is the official certificate of estimated resources, dated December 15, 2023, and subsequent appropriations and revenue budgets as amended. This is the $20,000 for the fire department ambulance grant.
So moved.
Second.
Swedek?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Third item is, following the December 5 meeting, County Commissioner Swedek did swear me in for my term that begins April 1, 2024.
Just like to mention, I know her, so.
Yeah, you know. And it's just always been the way we've done it. And then the item that on here is I may have a request to approve updated credit card authorization user list, which replaces trustee Augustine with trustee Swedek for the trustee credit card holder. So I need a motion or a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Martha, did you want to do this motion that we just, from your?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Thank you. And then a resolution authorizing the records destruction list submitted by Suzanne Peterlin consists of administration, zoning, and cemetery public records as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Swedek?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Now that's it.
Move to pay the bills in the amount of $388,130.61.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For police. Chief asked me to let everyone know that they've taken possession of two new vehicles and two more are in the process of being delivered. Once outfitted, they'll be put into service. And the second item is that Jeff Kenny has agreed to and signed a separation agreement, resigning from his position with Hinckley Police Office. Fire.
Good evening.
The one, I'm sorry, one quick second. You said, when are the next two vehicles coming?
They, they're in town. They're pending delivery. They're in the transport.
Okay, okay, thank you.
At this point, do you need to accept that resignation, or do you want to wait until the 23rd?
It's, you know, he said until it's finalized.
Okay. And I just want to thank Detective Kenny for her service to Hinckley Township. He's worked with us for well over a decade.
Wish him well. Fire.
Good evening. Request a resolution to accept one-year service agreement with Striker in the amount of $14,160.70 for the annual maintenance. It's our power load system, which mechanically loads the cot into the squad, the motorized cots, the life pack, heart monitors, the Lucas devices, the stair chairs. This covers any, anything they find wrong with it. It covers batteries and all that. It's, they, they can only be done through the manufacturer. If we wait till first year, there's a, he's unsure if it's a five or eight percent increase in, in the rate.
Wow. So moved. Second.
All in favor? Yes, yes, yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Next is request motion to accept the Ohio BWC FEEG grant in the amount of $13,719.98. This is through the, the Ohio BWC, and it's the environmental grant, which covers firefighters' exposure to cancer, so the next line is where I'll be going over what we're purchasing with it.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Request resolution to buy one gear dryer from Williams Direct and 32 hoods and 32 pair of gloves from Fire Safety. It should say services, not systems, for a total of $16,463.98, of which $13,719.98 will be paid via the Ohio BWC FEEG grant, and $2,744 will be paid through the fire departments. So this grant is offered every few years. We've got it. When I first became chief, I got hoods and gloves. They, our job is obviously very cancerous. Gloves and the hoods, they're finding has some of the most high contact with it, so everybody will have two sets of gloves and two sets of hoods, so they can change out and get them washed and laundered. And then the gear dryer will allow us to get our gear back in service. We had a fire in Brunswick this morning. There's five sets of turnout gear that are air drying in the bay. That puts five members pretty much out of service until that stuff dries. This gear dryer, they says, is within a few hours because it, it looks like a mannequin put it on there and it blows air through it, so it constantly moves air to dry the, dry the turnout gear.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Swedek?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Yes.
Request move firefighter, paramedic, James Gekel and Craig Burrows from EMT pay to six, to the pay of 1623 to their medic pay of 1854 hour per the organizational minutes. They both have their paramedic program.
Good for them.
We have a couple more that'll be testing here in next month.
Congratulations to them. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is request the resolution to accept the sale of the Cami Predator engine 312 to Brinley Fire Mountain Fire Apparatus, the highest bid on gov deals at a cost of $90,000, with all the auction fees being paid by the buyer. We asked for $75,000. We got $90,000. It was a bidding war in the last 20 minutes.
We will take it.
Yeah, we will take it.
We will take it.
Well done.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Swedek?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes. Yes.
Do you want to give a little recap on the Santa parade, that unique hits that you guys had and that?
Yeah, we, we did a Santa parade, and we did the, we, we did the Santa tracker, and there was almost 500 individual taps on that Santa tracker, and there was like 700 and some page refreshes throughout of it. We added a different route on there. It's put on between, via the fire department and the association, and it was a very good turnout, driving through the whole community, all the faces of the young and old. There are a lot of, there are a lot of grown children out waving.
Were you out there, Tom?
It's, it's.
Were you, were you there clicking the refresh? It was raining. We just have to.
Yeah, it was raining. I know. Last year, the, the pictures on Facebook was snowing. Year before, it was a cold, like rain sweep. Yeah, it's, why couldn't have been Saturday's weather of beautiful, I don't know, but it was a very good time. One of our members' parents play it, so they, they were trooping through the cold and getting in and out of the sleigh so we could go on the, you know, get off. We have to get, when we get onto this main state routes, we have to bring them off because we can't go five miles an hour all the way down 303 or there because of hazards with traffic and all that. But it's, it's always a fun time seeing everybody running and cheering and all that.
Santa parade is like the US mail, rain, sleet or snow, we're ready to go.
Exactly, that's all I have.
Thank you for doing that, because I know that the community really looks forward to that, so thank you to you and your entire.
It's, it's a long day. It's a lot different day than going on a car, you know, going on a car trip. It's, it's whatever reason.
It's a flood. There's a full flood, flood.
Yes. So that's all I have.
Thank you, chief.
Well done. Thank you. Service, maybe excuse, I've had three hours sleep.
Yes, sir.
Well, I could wait. Thank you, guys. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, guys.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Fantastic. How are you?
Um, the only thing I have for tonight is pretty much the road bid work for 2024, which, you know, we've all been talking about it. We finally got the estimates back for it. Just like I said, just wanted to, you know, inform the board and, you know, keep everybody in the loop of what's going on and what we're doing, so. The one road that we're looking at is the joint road with Broadview Heights, the other section of Boston next year. We're looking to do a two-inch mill and fill with a 441 hot mix. And then also Laurel Road, you know, and the same thing, a two-inch mill and fill with the 441. And then we're also, and like we discussed before, you know, finishing Valleybrook Boulevard, getting that done, and then getting the Salem Court entrance also done. You know, those are going to be the main ones, and then, you know, we didn't have enough time to get Bethany Lane done, and that's another one that I would also like us to see, you know, putting back out for bid, hopefully. I would say February, March. Try to look at that.
I'm sorry, Bethany, in February or March?
Yeah, because I want to contact Lewis and Lee and then have them update a couple of things in the bid specs, but, you know, that one's very important to get out this year, so let's get it out early and, you know, go from there, so. That's, that's in dire need back there. Like Valleybrook and Salem, we got approved for, what was that? That was an ARPA, OPWC, so that's a 50-50 split. So I think our half will be right around that 291 mark for that, so, you know, that's a plus and get a little bit more concrete done this year, so.
So that's the grant, the OPC?
Yes.
Okay. OPWC.
And then like the asphalt, so like Boston Road came in at two, or the estimate is 283, 464 and 50 cents. Obviously, Broadview, I want to get this sent over to, I can't remember his name over there, but I have his email. I want to get the estimates sent over to them because obviously they have to get it through council also, so. But, you know, it's just, this is a good start, and, you know, want to make sure, see, you guys want to go forward with all these roads that we're discussing here tonight.
Yeah, I think that the folks on Beth, Bethany Lane, I mean, that.
That's bad.
It's been horrible for many years. They are very good about it, and if we could finish up Valleybrook, I know that the residents there, we have one this year come in and speak to the fact that it was stopping right at his driveway, and he's been asking to replace his driveway and doesn't want to go to the expense of doing that without the road being done, you know, prior to, so. I would definitely encourage the next board to tackle those.
So this, this information is on the list that we need to give Angie a consensus for moving forward, and I, I'm supporting this list, so if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and do that.
Perfect.
Anyone? Okay. All right. Anything else, Mike?
No, that'll do it.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, while you're still here, I'll just talk about two more things. One was the Coback Field vandalism. There still is no information on who did that after talking with Ra, the insurance agent, with our, and we have a $500 deductible, and the cost estimate from the original contractor was around 2,200 to do the repair. And was it 25?
I thought. Not positive on that, but.
It was more than two. I know that.
Don't quote me on that.
But after talking with Mike and him overlooking the work they were going to do, he's confident that they can affect the same repair using the in-house equipment and purchasing some of the conditioner to restore it to its same condition. Ra was amenable to that. And in light of that, instead of filing a claim, we could still try and file a claim, but that would put jeopardy, a rate increase. Ra agreed that we'll have service guys go out and look at it in the spring, once the weather breaks, and work with them to get it done. So if there is no objection to that, that's the course of action I'd like to take.
And by using our service department, it would be less than the contractor estimate of 2,500.
Yeah, it's not going to take much to do it. It's not as bad as what everyone's making it out to be. It's little hand tamping in the outfield and just dragging the infield, refilling the holes.
What's the estimate on the conditioner cost?
Oof, that's hard to say. I'd have to probably be like, I can't remember. There's a D and L. I'd have to ask them, so I'd give them a call and see. There's a couple of different people that have it, so see what the price is per ton, but it's not going to take that much to do it.
I mean, I, I don't care either way, but I don't think this is going to jeopardize increasing our rates on the insurance. They'd probably do a little cost benefit analysis on their time and the cost of the conditioner. They're going to get it paid by the insurance company.
Well, I think the conditioner probably would be, I'm guessing, but I don't think it would be more than the deductible, the 500.
I wouldn't think so, so.
Well, we have time. I mean, I'm just saying, you, you need to, you can't just say that it's cheaper to have the service department do it when it can go through our insurance company.
Well, I can have them submit it just because his initial, it, it was not covered.
Oh, it's, okay, I'm sorry. You said it would jeopardize increasing.
No, he said he can submit it up the chain and see if they can get a ruling on it to cover it.
Oh, well, that changes the.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I could still do that in the meantime because we're not going to look at it until the spring anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that, it's, you know, you're assuming that it's cheaper to do it this way. But you're, you're guestimating that, right?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't add material.
How much is a conditioner? I mean, you have probably a better idea than anybody in this room.
I can't remember what we paid on, we were, or when I was a CYB. It's not cheap.
You're baseball dad.
Yeah, it's not cheap, but I wouldn't, I don't, I don't think you're going to have to add material. I think you can just re-drag that field out because those aren't even very deep in the infield, and the outfield just is going to take a little hand tamping, a little bit of handwork, so. But.
And it's not like they took the conditioner with them and left, you know, I mean.
No, it's, it's, all it did was just make a rut infield.
And from your initial conversation, Jack, with Jim, he did not think that it would be.
He said it was not covered.
Okay.
But he could, he said they, there's always an appeal where you can send it in and do that, but in light of that, I wanted to make sure that we, we wouldn't get hit with a rate increase just by sending that up and then having them say, oh, okay, well, now you.
Well, if it's not covered, it wouldn't, there would be no rate increase. It doesn't make any sense. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the premise that I will work on for the time being, and I can still have a discussion with Jim about whether or not he thinks it's worthwhile to pursue a claim.
Okay.
Okay. All right, the other two. All right, the other two, uh. ODOT has a right of way acquisition for the corner of three oh three and Ridge. They're installing. Uh, new lights for crosswalk protection, so. It's something they're doing on all the crosswalks on the state routes, so there'll be lights on each of the corners. Not much we can do and it's, they send you this nice little notice saying, uh. We're going to take a little piece of your property in the right of way. There's not much you can do about it.
How much property are they looking at taking? We're talking about the historical society, just for everybody's.
Well, on each corner, but.
Obviously, but.
There's a three hundred square feet. So that's what the prosecutor's office and I. I mean, you can fight these things if we so desire, but. I don't think it's likely. I just need to get a consensus from the board that we're okay with submitting uh and accepting the offer from ODOT.
I, yes.
For crosswalks and lights.
Yes.
That we already have.
Well, they're replacing the.
It'll be interesting what they do at this corner where Town Hall is because that's where all of those big poles and wires are for Ohio Edison.
Amongst other people.
They're replacing the control signals like the walk no walk kind of thing or like overhead lighting?
Overhead light to illuminate the crosswalk.
Three hundred square feet on each corner. That's a lot.
Right? I, I understand you can't really argue, but I'm just curious why so much, right?
I. I don't know if they're putting something under, underneath. I don't know.
It's been ten by thirty. I mean, hell, that gets you across the road.
Yeah.
Right? Thanks.
Any objection?
No.
I have to object to it. I, I don't think there's any reason for them to take three hundred square feet. I'd like to know more about it. But I got the same letter you did and it doesn't go into the details of it.
I'll get you all the information. You can look at it.
Okay.
Speaking of ODOT. Up at Stony Hill in three oh three, they're uh doing a loop replacement. In that area, they're taking out, uh, I believe it's magnetic right now that's in the pavement. So they're going to take that out and put radar in there for traffic control. Um, there's a pre-construction meeting online tomorrow that I'll be going to to. Get additional information on that. I just wanted to make you aware that it's probably a project in the future this year.
They're removing the magnetic in the pavement and replacing it with what?
With radar.
Too bad they weren't cleaning the roads last night.
And the last is uh, just to update you. Um, I had a discussion with Mike and uh, I worked up that presentation for you guys about the. Uh, signage for the donated property by Mr. Gibson. I emailed the information to him. It bounced back as undeliverable and apparently uh. Suzanne says he has no plan to obtain a new email address at this time. Uh, I mailed the same information to him on November twenty nine and uh, there's been no responses of yet.
I did speak with Mr. Gibson. Um, he said that he is not happy with the aluminum sign and the direction that the township is going. He said he had several meetings with you regarding the sign and he wanted to see something wood or something that looked like wood. To honor um his wife's family legacy. And um, he's quite frustrated, to be frank. He said he's donated a, a property that's very expensive. And of great value to our township and um, an effort to preserve it. And um, he's just asking us to table it again. He said with the holidays, he will certainly try to give you a call, but he's been very busy. Because he received your letter in the mail.
Would have been nice to hear from him, but is what it is. All right, I have nothing further on that. Uh, anybody else have anything for service? Good to go if you want.
Thank you, Mike.
Merry Christmas, Mike.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody. Zoning.
Zoning, um. We've got four open alternate positions listed on our website and I'm just curious as to how that happened. Um, I went back and reviewed the meeting minutes from November twenty first as well as the video. Um, at no point did we agree to list all four alternate positions. So I'm just wondering if the trustees can assist me in this um. Meeting minutes read, discussion followed, and it was determined the open positions would be posted on the website and interviews would be scheduled for January. When we say open, are we talking about the member positions and the alternate positions? Or are we just talking about the open positions where the alternates and the members didn't express an interest in staying on board?
Um, I know there was a lot of questions about this, so I went back and watched the meeting as well. And I took it as the four alternate positions are the open positions. Personally, I think that um, everybody should have to re-interview, no matter if they are. Um, a full voting member or um, an alternate member. Think that zoning uh, zoning board members change less frequently than trustees. So I think that the trustees should have the opportunity to interview all the zoning members. Um, it was not discussed for the full voting members. It was only discussed alternates. So at this point, I think that's what we have to do is interview for the four alternates because that was what was discussed. And that is what was posted um, on the website, but I will certainly bring that up in organizational meeting. That I think moving forward, everybody should have to re-interview for their seat.
So if everyone has to re-interview for their seat, then Lindsay Werble from the BZA would have to re-interview as for her member position. As well as Matt Marzullo from zoning commission.
Absolutely, that is why I said moving forward. That is why I said moving forward, I will be discussing it at organizational meeting in January because we did not discuss it. This is our last meeting of the year, so we're kind of out of time with this. But that is something that I feel moving forward, everybody should, should re-interview. Because I think that the trustees should have the opportunity to sit down with every member.
So I'm still not understanding when the decision was that we were going to list all four alternates. Even Martha said in the video, there's only one alternate position open. Based on past practice, if someone sends us an email saying they want to continue on, we accept it. We accepted it for Matt Marzullo. We accepted it for Lindsay Werble as members. Why wouldn't we not accept Tom Schrader's for BZA alternate? And Andrea Chetos for zoning commission alternate. Just because an alternate term is one year does not change the fact that they should be treated this with the same dignity and.
I don't think it has anything to do with dignity.
Was never decided in the meeting that all four alternates would be interviewed.
I echoed and said, I would like to re-interview everyone as well.
You were the only one who said it. You said you wanted to interview all four alternates. You wouldn't mind interviewing all four alternates. It was never decided to post all four on alternate positions.
Well, at one point trustee Astral said, would you like me to post this? And you said, no, you go ahead and do it.
I did, but there was never a quorum that it would be all for alternate positions. She was talking about a January meeting, so it made sense for her to post it because she was talking about January when I will not be here.
We did discuss this at the last meeting also and we reiterated that we were going to be um. Re-interviewing for all four alternate spots. We just discussed that two weeks ago.
I think that's a grave disservice to our alternates. Um. And I, I've, I've never seen it happen before that all alternates have to re-interview when the members don't. Um, I'm hearing what you're saying that that will change in the future. Um, but you know, we've got. If I look back at our December thirteenth meeting last year when we were booking to um. Place Cindy Eggleman in the zoning commission member position, trustee Astral said that she was an existing alternate. She had been on the board for a year, although it had been eight months. She was knowledgeable, does her research, great background. Trustee Sweattick echoed trustee Astral's thoughts and stated that the other, other candidates should get their feet wet. He continued that Cindy being an alternate right now, she has the background and that she would have his vote. Um, trustee Sweattick, you also stated that you wanted to build a knowledge base with whomever was chosen as an alternate. In case we lose another board member and you referred to it as building a bench and I completely agree with all those sentiments, which is why you would keep your alternates on.
Right, but Cindy re-interviewed.
Cindy re-interviewed, correct. But we interviewed for a member position. We didn't just pick and choose who was going to interview. Alternates and, and members should be treated the same.
We're not picking and choosing. We've discussed it now, I feel, at length. This is the third time we are discussing this. It was discussed a month ago. It was discussed again two weeks ago and we are discussing it for the third time today. This is what was decided. We have, um, it's actually the only thing on my agenda tonight. Is to schedule the special meeting for the interviews of those positions.
Well, I just want to state publicly that based on the rationale of putting Cindy in as the member, you, I would think that Andrea Chetos would get the member position on the zoning commission.
Well.
Um, furthermore.
It actually does not work that way and I will, I'll, yeah, I, I will, thanks. Um, because it did not work that way when you replaced Bruce Schneider after he passed away. You did not replace him with the alternate who was on the board at that time. So you can't pick and choose when it will work for you. This is what we thought would be the best way to move forward as we move into a new year with a new board. We feel that the new trustees should have the opportunity to interview the candidates. And I, and I don't have anything else to say about it.
Arguing that my, my, all I'm doing is stating what you said for that time. You weren't a part of the Phil Spelman conversation in December of twenty twenty one.
Noted.
Lisa Rushworth has um, applied for the zoning commission. She took a three-month leave of absence on July eighteenth of this year. Have we heard anything as to whether or not she's going to be returning as a proctor?
No.
Okay, so I, I just want the public to know that my position is that she should be non-eligible for rehire. As she has effectively quit without notice as a proctor.
Uh, I don't think that's accurate.
That's my opinion.
Very good.
Uh, the concept plan for Sanctuary Court is scheduled at the Medina County Planning Commission for tomorrow morning. And we have a twenty-five River Road update. Uh, Tom Z has been working on this at length. And has prepared um, multiple proposals. There are no contracts with this company, so a contract is. Not something they have, no different than many of our other vendors. Um, it's my understanding that police chief Sutner has recommended two police officers on duty. For the entirety of the cleanup, which is two weeks long in estimation. And that's an additional ten thousand dollars more. Um, and so I just wanted to make the trustees aware and um. Let you know that when we've done cleanups before, the, the police have not been at the location for the entirety. Um, furthermore, we've had conversation publicly over and over and over again about this gentleman. He is elderly, um, unable to clean up the property himself. We've spoken to his. I, I've been told that others have spoken to his ex-wife, his daughter, his son. I don't see him being a risk and furthermore, police chief Sutner told Tom Z and I that. The, there was a comment made here publicly about this gentleman and there is no truth to it. There's no report about it. So I'm just wondering why we need to have two police officers on duty for the entirety of the cleanup, which is an additional cost of ten thousand dollars to the township. So the township's billing the township. Um, I will get this information to you, so you have it. Um, but we have to make a decision as to whether or not we will have police presence for the entirety. Which comes to a final estimate of twenty thousand dollars for cleanup for two weeks. That's with two police, I'm sorry, with one police officer. Two police officers was twenty-five thousand dollars.
This is the first I'm hearing of that chief center is recommending two officers on duty.
I just.
For the entire duration of the cleanup, so.
What rate of pay?
Fifty dollars an hour.
Fifty dollars an hour. How does that translate to ten thousand dollars?
For two weeks for the hours worked? I, I have no idea. They're saying that they are told that they have to pay for the officer and then we have to then pay them to pay for the officer.
Well, yeah, they're private duty, so then that's, that's how that would work.
Right. But I don't understand why we need two officers when we dealt with the private property. We didn't, we had an officer just. Regularly working, pop over, be present and the township wasn't built at all.
Yeah, I mean, that only comes to.
Eight thousand.
I don't, I'm, I'm.
For two.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know.
Well, it's in a, so I think we recorded about fifteen thousand. And so for one officer, it's twenty thousand dollars. For two officers, it's twenty-five thousand for the entire, the officers and the cleanup. So we're talking an additional five thousand dollars per officer for two weeks worth of work. And our zoning budget just doesn't support that.
Wasn't the initial quote eight thousand dollars?
I, I have it here that it was like uh, eleven or fifteen. I, I don't have it in front of me. That was based on my conversation with Tom Z today. Because I was wondering where these numbers are coming from.
That's what he said when we started it down this road. He said. And that was my point when we started was that the township doesn't have the funding to do these. Even though we can recoup it through a tax lien, how long does that take to pay back?
Well, we have the monies for the cleanup. We don't have the monies to pay for two police officers to be there the whole time. That has never been a part of the cleanup. I've sat at this table and done these resolutions before. We've never had a, been charged for a police officer that we have on duty.
Well, somebody's making a, a, a risk assessment.
In the right, the, the rebate.
What's the difference?
Well, the difference is, is that just came and picked up three or four cars.
Okay.
And towed them away.
So the difference is.
So someone wasn't at the home of the, the individual for two weeks.
The elderly gentleman.
I'm, I'm just saying you.
But that's what I'm saying.
Same and it's not the same.
I, I, this is a gentleman that we have heard time and time again that trustee Ashwell has talked to family members. Police chief Sutner has talked to family members. This is a man who physically cannot hardly move. And we're sending over police officers to protect who?
I've never heard that. I've heard that he's in very good health.
I have not heard that.
I, I've spoken to his son-in-law multiple times. He's in um, very good health, so.
Tom Z is still waiting for that information, by the way, because we need it for our track.
Last time you talked to him, I emailed it to him last week.
Okay, good, because we talked about.
Yeah.
We talked about it and it wasn't in his, his uh.
Yeah, no, I emailed it to him last week, so.
I'm just wondering what validates two police officers on duty?
I, I can't answer that question for you because this is the first I'm hearing of it. We initially said uh, that there should be um, for, for the safety of um, the cleanup. For the safety of township personnel, that there should be an officer there. Um, that that would have to come out of, you know, they would have to be billed for that. Because police chief Sutner does not have that in his budget to have an officer there for every day for two weeks. This is the first I'm hearing of two officers, so I, I can't answer that. I don't know where that's coming from.
I just don't know what, whose safety we're protecting. It just feels like when we've done this in the past, police officer has introduced themselves. With the, the cleanup crew and said, I'm here to do this. Here's the resolution. The trustees are doing this. This is the, this is the process. And they may stay for an hour or two and then they leave. And they may stay for an hour or two, and then they leave. They don't stay for the entirety.
My guess would be it's because a resident came here and said that the, he had heard that the property owner had pulled a gun on his wife and daughter, and by a resident introducing that, it's all of a sudden, we have now a burden of responsibility.
We have a burden of responsibility, absolutely, but it's called hearsay. Just because we hear it doesn't mean it's true, first of all. This is a United States of America. We're innocent until proven guilty, and the police chief, I had a conversation with him. There's no report or any, anything about this address and that happening. So just food for thought as you move forward, because past practice is not that we ever have had a police officer there, or charged, or billed the township for police presence. Um, my request to leave ten thousand dollars in the cemetery line, thank you for that, um, email, Martha, was more specifically just for the trustees to please remember to keep that money for the keeping house at Maple Hill Cemetery. That's something we briefly talked about. It is a shale roof. Original shale is extremely fragile, difficult to replace and costly. So we did talk about an alternate option, but I just wanted to make sure that we save that money for that. I also have for you these custom memorial markers, God bless you, that, um, Linda from the Hinckley Garden Club presented to me. She would like our permission to utilize this marker for the tree that they planted in memorial of um, Matilda Nerlik, who was one of the founders of the Hinckley Garden Club. As you recall, they planted that tree at the historical society. So she just wanted to make sure that you approved of it, and if you do approve it, I thought it would make sense just for us to purchase two for the trees we just planted in memory of Ray Schulte, Trustee Schulte, and Trustee Rhodes.
So three hundred and fifty dollars?
The garden club will pay for their own.
Okay.
And I was gonna make a motion not to exceed three hundred dollars. Martha already talked to them about tax exemption. They said if we don't live in Illinois, we don't have any problem. There's no tax.
Okay.
So if you guys are in agreement.
How big are these?
That's a good question. Let me pull up here for you. I was just looking at it. They are stakes that are twelve and a quarter inch, ten and a quarter straight and two, uh, two-inch angle. So ten and a quarter by fourteen and a quarter. And they will only hold a certain number of characters, sixteen characters, which I made sure would work for all three.
And what's the material?
Material, cast aluminum. And it's bronze and gold, golden color. Here's a colored version if you wanted to see it.
Is this, um, I mean, I think it's a good idea to do this. I'm just wondering, um, for consistency, is this gonna be something that is easy to get again, in case we need to do?
Yeah, I actually sent the link to, um, Linda sent the link to all three of us, so you all have access to it. Linda from the garden.
Yeah, I saw the link. I don't object.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to purchase two memorial flags from the Comfort Company, not to exceed three hundred dollars for the trees planted in memory of trustee Rhodes and trustee Schulte.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last thing on my agenda, you just touched on, um, trustee Sweattick. So thank you. That's all I have. Oh, one really quick thing. I just wanted to thank Hinckley and all of our staff and all of the friends that I have met along the way. You guys have been amazing. And it's been in my honor and privilege to serve you and work with you and get to know all of you better. So thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just moving into, going back to that conversation we were, uh, discussing earlier about the zoning interviews for the special meeting, this will be the second special meeting. The third special meeting we'll have to have on January second. Um, we had, um, five applicants. So Suzanne and I thought that starting a special meeting at four o'clock in twenty-minute increments would be a safe bet for, um, for those interviews. So I wanted to make sure that you do not object to a special meeting at four o'clock. That gives us a little bit of a buffer, so we can close out that special meeting and, um, take a ten-minute break before we start our special meeting for the organizational meeting and our regular trustee meeting at six thirty.
No objection.
No objection? Okay, I will email Suzanne. And then the other thing I have is just a question, um, for both of you, Jack and Melissa. And that is if either of you have ever recorded or taped a Hinckley trustee executive session.
I have not.
I have not. Thank you.
All good?
Yep, that's all I have.
I only have one thing left on here to talk about, and that was the employee manual. It's completed. Has been, for the most part, distributed. I have two more receipts to get. And you should have a hard copy and an electronic copy as well.
Thank you for taking care of that. I gave it to Suzanne and Lynn yesterday.
Anything else from the board? From the public? Good evening.
Good evening. Debbie Moss, sixty-three Salem Court. I would like to take this time to thank Melissa for all her service as a trustee, as well as a member of Hinckley and all she's done for the township as well as the community, and I wish her all the best. And I wish the new board all the best, and I can only hope that it benefits Hinckley for the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Debbie. I appreciate that.
All right. Nothing else for the good of the order. I will move to adjourn at seven thirty-two PM.
Second.
Second, and by Ashrell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.